Seven o'clock, and I'd like to call to order the wonderful open to the public first meeting in about a year and a half. I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Township of Lyon Board of Trustees, Monday, August 2nd, 2021. And if we could please stand with the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. April, could you please call the board?
Yes. Sean O'Neil.
Here.
For Simba.
Here.
Robert Swain.
Present.
Lisa White.
Present.
Michelle Kirsh. Here. Dr. Coney.
Here.
John Doyle.
Here, Lyon Township. Oh, sorry. Okay. We're going to move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Anyone have a chance?
Yep, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as submitted. I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. We're going to move on then to the approval of the agenda.
I will move the approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're going to move on. Hey, I'm new to this now.
It's very fresh.
It does feel weird. Okay, we're going to move on to announcements and communications. Anyone have anything they'd like to announce?
A couple of quick things. I talked to a couple of residents recently. One of them was questioning the, and we've talked about this before, the hazardous household waste collection. I'm just, like most of us, hoping that our recycling gets picked up on trash day. I know help is an issue for a lot of businesses, but it was something I know Trustee Hicks was working on when he retired, and I guess I'd just like to make the request that when we get into this fall and we're budgeting, that we try to take a look at what, if we can get a response or a quote, what something like that might cost. I think it would be something that most residents could make use of, and, you know, it won't be cheap, but it'll certainly be of good value, I think, with, you know, all the things that people have accumulated in their garages and basements. So, that was one item. And one other request I had for this fall for budgeting was that we possibly take a look at the process of special assessment districts for road replacement or repair for some of the neighborhoods. We don't really have a policy. It's something that, you know, a couple of neighborhoods have been interested in over the years, but as they begin to age, I think it would be important for us to, you know, possibly discuss how we might be able to support these neighborhoods going forward. I know we've all heard from neighborhoods recently, and it's just something I think we should maybe have a discussion about when we get into the workshop, see what we might be able to do to assist them through the process. And that's really all I have at this point.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else?
John, I had a request from a resident to address some speed issues on 11 Mile, particularly near Martindale Road, and she was asking what needs to be done to have a speed study. I know we talked about this a while ago. Are we in the queue for any speed study with Road Commission? But she had asked specifically about the speed limit on 11 Mile around Martindale. So I told her I would convey that.
Okay.
Does that drop right there by the city, like down?
She said, well, from Martindale to Milford, I think it's 55.
It's not even posted.
No, it's not.
Right, it's not posted, so it's 55. And so her request was to, or she asked how do we?
I think she asked to contact the Road Commission.
She did, and they told her to contact you, or contact us.
Wasn't that the road we were doing a speed?
Yes.
Is that a speed study road? I think that was a speed study road.
Are we in the queue for a speed study?
I don't think so.
No, but I have inquired with the Road Commission about that, as well as another one, and I have not heard back from their traffic safety department. So, because there's also, there's another road as well that residents are asking for a speed study, so I haven't heard back from them, and I will follow up and then let the board know where we're at.
So who, instead of, I guess because we're asking them to call the Sheriff's Department, so, or the Road Commission, so the Road Commission's the one who does it, correct? Or does it have to be requested by us? I guess I just don't know.
I don't think they would do it just at the request of one resident. I mean, they can always contact the Citizen Services Department if there's a speed issue there. What I was told previously from the Road Commission for speed studies is that if they studied, let's say, 11 Mile, for example, they have to study 11 Mile through the entire county. It's not just the Lyon Township portion, and it takes about three years to get those accomplished because it's quite an undertaking. And in most cases, the speed limit doesn't change because it's set at the 85th percentile, I think, of what the drivers drive. And so they've actually, and I don't want to say discourage them, but that's how they set the speed. So, I was told that a while ago, I think when we were talking about 10 Mile several years ago.
I believe the state police will play a role. Even though it's a county road, the state police still plays a role in deciding if the speed limit changes as well.
If it changes, I believe you're correct. Yes.
And they're, I don't think they have a whole huge group of people working on that statewide.
No.
Small office, and they go all over, so.
But I'll keep you posted when I find out from the Road Commission.
Yeah, after they set at the 85th, at least they're at 55, so there's no chance it can go up.
Right.
I've had experience that the limits actually go up after a speed study, so.
Yes.
We're already at the max on, at least on the 11 Mile portion.
Okay.
John, I have a couple items too. I spoke with MDOT about the I-96 Flex Route that is forthcoming through the township and all the way to Novi. They pushed back their start date for construction until the spring. I did re-inquire about a median crossover for our emergency responders somewhere prior to Wicksum Road, so that they don't have to take a long secure this route to respond to incidents on westbound 96. So that's sort of in the works as well. Part of the delay on their design and construction is, MDOT and the Road Commission are partnering to look at the Kent Lake Grand River intersection to see how that's going to get reconfigured as well. So, that's under study too, but it still looks like the 96 will be bid in December for spring construction. Second item I had was, I was contacted by our state rep, Kelly Breen, who was contacting local jurisdictions, local jurisdictions within her district about opportunities through the American Rescue Plan Act. So, Leslie was gracious enough to help me out with some estimates and some projects that we sent to her, to hopefully we can get some of the state money to filter down and do our area as well. And then, most importantly, I just wanted to thank the full-time officials for submitting all that paperwork for the township, so we can get, hopefully, about $2.2 million. So, that's awesome. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Okay, so no other announcements. We're going to move on to call the public. We can stand up and talk about anything non-agenda related. Okay. Seeing nobody, we're going to move on to reports. The DDA report is, again, we're working on it. We're not quite there yet. We do have a new interim director that the DDA did hire. It's a McKenna associate, Kathleen Jackson, and she's filling in part-time and doing the things that we need to keep that moving forward. We're still actively looking for a director, and unfortunately, we've had no inquiries or no applications. So, we're going to go ahead and put it out again. We're going to try to advertise again, but from what I understand, there's many, there's many communities looking for the same position, so we're going to be in a competition for that. I just saw anyone else. Well, we do have an interim director.
I spoke to her, and she is very knowledgeable.
She's really good.
Kathy Jackson. I'm just going to tell you, she's looking into some abatements and some other things that, but she is very knowledgeable. I was very impressed, so really happy that the DDA hired her in the interim.
Well, I think, I think she has a background in DDA, right?
Right. She does. She spent a lot of time in commerce, working out in their DDA. She was their director for seven years, eight years, something like that.
That's why.
Yeah.
She's great, yeah, she's nice.
So, we're working on it, and we do have somebody in place for the interim, and hope that we'll get some applications out. Let's go ahead, and anybody have any questions about that? We all good? Okay. We're going to move on to fire chief. Anything? Man, a long time since somebody's come to that. See if I remember how to do this.
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick report. We have put together an apparatus committee to start looking at replacing engine two. It's going to be a 17 to 19-month process, so we're going to get started now, just, so hopefully we'll be ready when budget time comes, looking at 22. As far as the Station Two update last month, we, you guys approved the study to look at the feasibility of putting on an addition or second story at Station Two. I'm not going to read the entire thing from the architect. Basically, it's, the process is still taking place. I'm not sure if it'll be complete by next month, but he is basically looking at whether the existing soils and footing size are going to match, or be enough, to take on the new floor loads and additional wall weight with the second level addition. They need to determine if the existing footings can accommodate this added load, or if they need to add a new structural frame on the interior. They've also reached out to the soil boring company, listed on the drawings and the building departments, in hopes of getting a copy of the original soils report. And he's also trying to meet up with a structural consultant to get their thoughts on the footing or potential frame. So hopefully next week I'll get an update on that. And then finally, negotiations continue with the labor union, and we have a mediation set again for September 1st. And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Chief. All right, then we'll move on to Lieutenant Footfield.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
How are you doing?
Hello. It's good to be back. So I have any major incidents to report, just a quick announcement. You know, every year we do the law enforcement run for the Special Olympics. So today I just got the notice that we'll be doing it again this year, September 17th. If you're not familiar with it, we do this, we run the western leg for Oakland County, so we pick up the torch from South Lyon PD at Pontiac Trail to Silver Lake, and we run it all the way up to Old Plank and Pontiac Trail to pass it off to Wicksum. So this will be happening September 17th at about 9:20 a.m. And if you have an opportunity to come out, you could see me run the first leg. We'll have a police escort. It'll be a big deal. And you can also donate, too, if you're interested.
How far is your leg?
Oh, it's getting shorter. Last year.
I'd be pretty sure, I'd be from a medium.
Yeah. It's getting rough. But that's all I have.
Does it check out to Special Olympics?
I'll forward the information. Once I get with, Novi heads it up, so we have an officer that coordinates everything for this western leg, and he's still working out some details, and he'll get it to me and I'll relay it to the board.
Okay, let us know, and then we can put it on the website, too, in case anybody else wants to donate.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Mr. O'Neil wanted me to ask if he could run a leg of it as well.
You can split mine with me.
You know what? Really terrible back injury. Thanks for asking me that. And thanks for offering.
I knew it was important to him, so.
Next year, probably.
Sure.
Next year, yeah.
There's always next year.
Right. That's right. You can carry me.
Thank you, Lieutenant. All right, moving on to Planning Commission.
Yes, thank you, John. We had two Planning Commission meetings in the month of July. The first one was July 12th. We held three public hearings on that day. The first one was the Wall Bridge Special Land Use, which was recommended through the Township Board, and it's on our agenda tonight. We also had the Performance Standards, which also was recommended, and we had the longest board meeting we have had in a very long time, which is, I hope I say it right, the Sir Bapa Temple. I'm going to cut it right there. We had a special land use and a site plan review. We had over 100 people call in, and the Planning Commission actually tabled it for a traffic study and some additional information. So that concluded that board meeting that went to midnight. And we had one on July 26th, and we only had actually one agenda, well, two, the master plan, but one was the Lyon Medical Center, which is located right next door on their site plan, and we also tabled that for some additional information and maybe some small revisions. So that concludes my report. Supervisor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions? All right, we're going to move on to the ZVA.
We had, our last meeting was in June, but we do have an August meeting, and NLB Corporation is seeking a variance regarding the sign, and that is on, what date is that? August 16th, Monday, at 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Moving on to Park Advisory Board. Robert, anything going on there?
I'll just highlight again that we have two vacancies, if anyone is interested in participating.
Need two members.
I believe Chris is planning on coming to possibly our next meeting.
Okay.
Some proposal.
Okay, sounds good. All right, move on to the DPW, and basically it's just a water-driven. The large 20 gallon tank is still not quite online. Had a few hiccups turning that on, and we'll probably have that on Wednesday. The water softening is still moving forward. We're still in a little bit of design phase as far as getting the equipment. I shouldn't say design phase, that's done, but ordering the equipment has been a challenge. That might take a little longer than we anticipated, but it is moving forward. We're hoping to have that moving here in the next few months, as far as starting assembling. So that's pretty good news. As far as anything else, we're really, everything's been running fantastic. The water's been delivered nice and quality, and pretty excited about it. Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Did we have a report from the library? I know we had asked if they wanted to make a report monthly.
No one's reading it.
And did they have, did you guys reinstitute their, the meeting, like the subcommittee, or did they?
Oh, I think they had a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Both Brian and I met with the library representatives and came up with some, it was really good to gather information for what they're looking for immediately, and so we have some information that I'll be going over with the full-time officials this week on some options for either the 11 Mile site, or even possibly, my suggestion was looking at options that could be done at the existing site and weighing the pros and cons. So we're just kind of getting into the details right now.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, they have it, you know, it's funny. They want to come to the board again, so as soon as they do, we'll put them on the report, so.
Would, I guess, when, as far as that goes, I guess, is there any reason that we couldn't ask that they just come and give a monthly in the normal report list as opposed to being specific agenda items?
I don't think they, they would be in the reports.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we can have them.
That's what we talked about, putting them in. So, don't think they have anything really new yet, so I think that's fine. Okay, everybody good? All right, we're going to move on to unfinished business, which we have none, so we're going to move on to new business. First new business we have is a consideration of an ordinance for the Township of Lyon to amend Chapter 48 zoning, Article 20 Performance Standards, Section 2003 Procedures for Determined Compliance, to amend subsection A Official Investigation, to amend subsection B Cost of Determination, and to amend subsection C Appropriate Remedies and to provide penalties for violations thereof. Brian, are you going to start off with this one?
Sure, I can get started. Thank you, John. This is really an item that has been brought to light administratively, just in the normal course of enforcing our ordinance, some of our performance standards that are related to things like sound or gas emissions. We just don't have the equipment or the training specific to measuring those items. And so this modification that Carol's team has drafted will give us a bit more flexibility in enforcing these performance standards. It won't obligate us to enforce standards that we can't reasonably enforce, but it will give us the option to continue to do so if we need to. So that's kind of the broad overview. I can take any specific questions, or maybe Carol can. I guess the one question that I did take in today was, is this related to just the performance standards or the zoning ordinance as a whole, and this change is specific to these performance standards? So we have another section in the ordinance that continues to regulate all of the other ordinance provisions.
Okay. You know, and these ordinances, these ordinance amendments are going to come kind of often as we're going through the enforcement of some of these ordinances. They are unenforceable, and some of the things that we have, they're old, and some of these things were put into existence quite a few years ago, and we're finding that they need to be updated. And this is just a process that we're going to be going through. There's several of these coming, just so you know. There's several other ordinances that have to be changed. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any comment. Anyone like to comment? Or, we good with it?
Make a motion that we move ordinance 08-21 to second reading.
I'll support that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Moving on to Wall Bridge, Lyon Distribution Center One, Special Land Use AP-21-28. Brian, again, you want to start this one?
Absolutely. Thank you, John. If you recall, the building that's under construction on the southwest corner of South Hill and Grand River was a special land use due to its location within our wellhead protection overlay district, and one of the conditions of that original approval from the Township Board was that when the tenant was found, it'd be brought back for special land use review. So that is the process that we're going through here. The proposed tenant will be taking over the entire 280,000 square foot facility for the production of roof systems for automobiles. Wabasto is the company that is producing hardtop and softup roof systems for the Ford Bronco, so they'll be creating those elements of the cars on-site here. All of the processes that are involved in the manufacturing of these roof systems would be classified by as right, or as by right in the I-2 district, which means if this were not in the wellhead protection, you wouldn't see this. It's a use that we want to see in this corridor, and is beneficial in furthering our master plan vision for the industrial corridor. Because it is in the wellhead protection area, we held the required public hearing, as Patty had mentioned, at the July 12th Planning Commission meeting. We clarified a few items that were on CESs and our initial list of concerns. We've highlighted a couple of those things tonight in our review dated July 26th. Specifically, because it's in the wellhead, we want to make sure that any of the regulated substances that might be utilized in the manufacturing process do not pose high risk factors for infiltration into our aquifer. And as you can see, we've cleared up those potential items. There are going to be redundant containment systems, both inside of the facility and at the loading dock. The fire marshal has had an opportunity to review the material safety data sheets and does not have specific concerns. The building official has done the same, and they'll be reviewing all of the containment elements inside the building, assuming that this moves forward towards occupancy. The industrial activity statement that was proposed, or that was submitted as part of the application does note that this is going to be a three-working shift per day operation in this facility, so we'll be operating 24 hours a day. We clarified at the public hearing that overnight traffic is anticipated to be just limited to employee vehicles, not heavy deliveries, so we won't have a lot of noise or any of those concerns for any of the residential development that's farther south down South Hill Road. The Planning Commission did require an emergency response plan be submitted to the building department prior to occupancy, so that would handle any containment or decontaminant issues associated with any spills that might arise inside or outside of the building. The other thing I want to note is that the economic well-being of the community is one of our standards. This is a operator who anticipates 500 jobs associated with the manufacturing process, so that's pretty significant for the township. The final item that I want to hit on are the specific conditions for wellhead protection, which is that in no way during construction or thereafter shall a project adversely affect the quality or quantity of water that's available in the wellhead protection overlay district, and that the project is designed to avoid substantial disturbance to the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and water-related natural characteristics of the site. On those fronts, the Wabasto operation is not anticipating any significant changes to the site plan from what was originally approved. There won't be additional out coverage or anything like that to be concerned with, so we're not introducing anything that you haven't seen before in terms of the site plan for the use. I mentioned all of the containment items, but I also want to hit on the activity statement anticipates typical for manufacturing water use draws from our system, and no impacts to the sanitary system as well that would cause a concern. So, finally, none of the regulated substances or the uses to create these roof systems are prohibited lists, prohibited uses listed in our ordinance, and so we have no concern that with this use going in. So in summary, you do have a Planning Commission recommendation for approval for this user. We have no open concerns in terms of zoning ordinance compliance. This is a user that we think can fit and will be respectful of our wellhead protection overlay district. Can take any questions? I know Leslie has submitted a report as well.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Russell, you want to add anything to your?
Well, I'd just like to add that we also have no objection with the Township Board taking action condition to our July 26th review letter, which is in your packet. It lists some conditions for the applicant, as far as, for example, item number one, a dry sump containment pit is proposed in their chemical room, a protective liner may be required, and details for the sump pit will be required by the building department. We did meet with the building official prior to completing our letter, so that they understand many of these items will go through their department for review upon build-out permit application. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. Anyone have any questions for Brian or Leslie? I know the applicants are here. Anyone have any questions at this time? Okay. Anyone have any questions for the applicants?
I have a question.
Okay, good. Introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Good evening. My name's Ed Hennessy.
Hi.
Good job.
I have a question. It's in the letter that was from the Planning Commission, materials dated July 9th, item seven, and I'm trying to get back to that. And it was regarding, let's see, the McKenna letter says that we suggest the applicants describe how this facility may evolve if a new product is to be manufactured here in the future, since a typical production run is shorter than the anticipated life of the structure. And so I was just curious about that.
Wabasto is a 120-year-old manufacturer globally. I've been with the company 32 years.
So what you're saying is?
Product cycle. Buildings stay, we move equipment out, we keep the core equipment if possible, we bring different equipment in if it's needed for new processes.
Okay.
And we, I mean, we're not a sequencing plant that sets up for a car and gets a contract.
Okay.
So the one project that we have that really is helping us grow is a Ford project. We've got others.
Okay.
F-150, 250, Dodge Ram, Suburban. We don't do just in this. We don't do just in this, you know, market in the Detroit, Michigan area. We make the Suburban in our Mexico plant. We make Mercedes-Benz in our Kentucky plant, and we, according to what's in the business area. So if Michigan does well, you know, Michigan area does well, we'll be fine, is my assessment.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
That actually does prompt a, I guess, a follow-up question of, maybe this is a Brian question, or if the, I guess I'm not, I wasn't reading that as a concern about the company leaving, but that if the processes change, so say your current planned use of the space changes and the processes shift, the approval is based on the processes that are occurring. So I guess the way this is written, the way that the wellhead special land uses work, would there be any requirement to come back if, say, they started using different chemicals or processes to re-review things? Would that just be handled administratively? How is that?
It would be handled administratively unless it's technically a change of use per zoning ordinance, then they'd have to go through a full approval process. So it depends what the change is. If it's Wabasto changing a minor process, I would say that's an administrative review. If it's a whole new user and a complete different set of chemicals, it's, to me, it would have to go through the entire wellhead, the special land use process again.
Yeah, I agree.
Can I ask your question? Anybody?
I was just going to mention that I had an opportunity, a couple of the elected officials, Ed came in and he gave us a whole detail of the company, what they make, the process, and I thought that was very interesting and I really enjoyed that. And we learned a lot about the company that normally we probably would not have that opportunity without physically going to see it, but Ed, he explained the chemical part and just the whole process, and it was, it was really enjoyable. And I feel like I know the company a lot better and a lot of its history that sometimes you just don't get that opportunity. So I'll be very anxious to go see it in person when that time comes. I hope you find us.
Thank you. The item about the liner that she was, that was brought up, we're working with Walbridge and our civil structural engineers now, exactly on the liner material, chemicals, make sure. So we're just not picking it. The engineers are going through and making sure it's spec actually right, which is going to be, you've asked for it, so we're putting it in. It's not in the other plant. This plant will have it, you know? So no issue.
Being the wellhead protection, you know why we have...
I totally understand. I drink the water.
Kind of a user.
I mean, it's, 500 people are going to be drinking the water.
Yeah. You're involved. You're involved.
I'm, yeah, we're here. This is, we're ISO 14,001 globally. From environmental, we have an environmental team globally. We do reports, we do, you know, we're in Lexington, Kentucky, and it's very strict there also for their bluegrass. We understand regional requirements, national, federal, you know, we'll work to be the good neighbor.
Oh, I agree. I think it's a, it's a wonderful company to have take that building. And so it's great. Anybody else?
I just had a comment on it.
Please.
Just reading the, I guess, there was one public hearing comment regarding flow of traffic, and this kind of stems back to our original board motion that approved the site plan was just to make sure that there's signage up about the, any vehicles using Grand River, not going north on South Hill on the gravel section. So having signs on the site itself directing the truck traffic and any deliveries and stuff to use Grand River.
We're working with the civil engineers, but if it's the zoning one that was on the, that was the first caller, I think, I thought that was related to the temple. There were like five of them that piled in really quickly.
We have a, we have a residential area, what Chris is talking about, we have a residential area north of your building and south...
Up on the right-hand side over the road.
When you cross...
Yeah, I went over there and looked around there.
And we would just like you, what he's saying, is try to sign that up so that no one, your trucks aren't using that as a...
No, well, are, understood. No, I can see using mill for growth on the way in and make a right on the way out, going down to back, which is what I would see. Perfect.
Okay. If everyone's ready, a motion would be in order. Anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to approve special land use AP-21-28, subject to any Planning Commission and reviewer conditions.
I'll support.
All right. We have a motion to support to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to the Pontiac Trail South Water Main, recommendation of contract award, Leslie. This is one we've been trying to get through for a while, so this is a good time.
Yes. The, as you know, the Pontiac Trail South Water Main is a continuation of the township's water system. The proposed project connects the existing water main just south of Quail Run Circle, which is by the Tim Hortons on Pontiac Trail, extending north, north of Nine Mile, through Lillian Street, K Street, and Marjorie Anne, back to Pontiac Trail at your north border along Pontiac Trail. The project was publicly bid on mitten and bids were opened on June 24th. A total of four bids were received. Lawrence M. Clark Incorporated submitted the low bid. We have reviewed all of the bids. The low bid submitted by Lawrence Clark in the amount of 1.1 million, 294,211 dollars and five cents. The second bid was submitted by DVM Utilities in excess of 1.4 million. We did contact three of the references sent in by the low bidder. All references provided positive marks on performance and attitude of contractor. Therefore, we recommend awarding of this contract conditional to receiving all permits to Lawrence Clark Incorporated in the amount of 1 million, 294,211 dollars and five cents. We are currently awaiting approval from Eagle on the Act 399 permit. That's why we would request that any award be conditioned on receiving all permits. Due to the large amount of utilities along the Pontiac Trail right of way, we are recommending allocating a 20% contingency for a total project budget of 1 million, 553,000, 53 dollars and 26 cents.
Any questions for Leslie on this project? So no, I'd like to, I'd like to get this moving forward. Anyone would like to make a motion?
Sure. I can make a motion, recommendation for award with a 20% contingency for Lawrence M. Clark Incorporated in the amount of 1 million, 553,000, 53 dollars and 26 cents.
I'll support.
All right. We have a motion to support for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now we're going to move on. I know, Chris, you brought up that you'd like to have an alternate, alternate for alternate.
Alternate.
Alternate to some kind. And I don't know if anybody's talked about that, so.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone would, on the board, would like to volunteer for that position?
I think we strong-armed Robert.
We did. We muscled him.
Okay. All those, step forward. Okay, well, I mean, if we want to appoint Robert, and he's willing to do that, I don't want to forget.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll support.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fantastic. There you go, Robert.
I'll make a motion that we move into a closed session for consideration of a closed session to discuss pending litigation, Baker Family LLC versus Charter Township of Lion, Oakland County Circuit Court Case Number 2,019-178359CZ, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268E, as an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the township.
I'll second. 7:30, 8 PM.
All right. We have a motion to move into closed session in a second. Could you please call us by role?
Pat Craponey?
Yes.
Michelle Cash?
Yes.
Lisa Blades?
Yes.
Chris Semlo?
Yes.
John Dolan?
Yes.
Robert Swain?
Yes.
Sean O'Gill?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be returned to closed session.
And we will be returning.
And we will be returning-